Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 2nd School Committee meeting here at Colbert. Going right into the agenda, public comment. If anybody here in the room would like to make a public comment? Would you like to come up to the?
Hello, everybody. My name is Lynn Hall. First time ever been to this kind of meeting with you guys. Long time, Braintree resident here, class of 93. I don't know who can answer this question regarding the project that we have at Braintree High School that's supposed to be going on with the ice skating rink. Maybe I might be in the wrong area here to ask these questions, but since, you know, there's a lot of official here, I would like somebody who can answer that question. I've been to many high schools around different cities and towns. Every high school has something shiny for their students. Nothing is shiny in Braintree High School. It's just a big pile of dirt, been there for years. And I don't know who's responsible for this project or can come up with some kind of answer for this project. I have two kids of my own. He's only in first grade and hopefully he doesn't have to wait for nine years later to go to, you know, take it on the skating rink at Braintree. So that's the reason I'm here tonight, just to want to know some answers, some, you know, update, things like that. So that way it's cleared up my mind, so that way, you know, I'm not thinking that only Braintree cannot afford anything, but other towns, they have all these shiny things. I also drive a bus, school bus driver, so I go to different high schools. I see all this different project they have building with their inside out, own high school. And I come back to Braintree High, I would say, how come these things are still the same? Big pile of dirt right there for years, so I just want to know the answer to that. Hi, Mayor.
How you doing? Welcome.
Do you want to address that?
Sure. The short answer is that we, the first two contractors failed to perform. And we are currently in negotiations with a third contractor. And we are very close to finalizing the deal. And if it does finalize, then within probably the fall of '23, you'll see this new Peterson Pool Ice Skating Rink Complex built.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And anytime you could just, if you want to be with me, just email my staff, we got a meeting. You're welcome.
I'm sure. I think this should be a clarification. The fact that this project, although on our campus, we don't really have that much involvement with that, that's being taken care of through the mayor's office. I think that should be clarified. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that has a public comment? No? Is there anybody online?
There is nobody online. Zero attendees.
Zero, okay. Thank you. Okay, continuing with routine matters. Approval of open session minutes from April 11th and 25th. Are there any changes or edits from anyone? Do I have a motion to approve both the April 11th and April 25th minutes? I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemane and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposeds?
I get a nigh and abstention. I wasn't here the 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to communications and accommodations. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first two items in your packet this evening, you'll find one from the South Shore Collaborative around their FY23 budget. They appear to be in a decent position at this point. And certainly if you have any questions, I can attempt to answer those. The other piece in your packet is for your information only, and that is a copy of the Finance and Operation Approved Minutes from March 17th, 2022. As regards other communications, I will turn it over to Miller.
Thank you. So I wanted to start by letting the committee know that I'm thrilled to update everybody about a number of appreciation events that are taking in the world of education, both last week and this week. Specifically, last week on April 27th, we had, we celebrated Administrative Assistance Day. This week, from May 2nd through May 6th, we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. This Friday, which is May 6th, we celebrate School Lunch Heroes Appreciation Day. And finally, this upcoming week, starting specifically on May 6th and carrying through to May 12th, we celebrate Nurse Appreciation Day. This year has been very challenging. So while we're thrilled that we're back five full days in person and trying to get back to a sense of normalcy, we quickly realized that the social, emotional, and academic needs of our students were great, right? So the majority of the school year has still included managing widespread absences with strict COVID protocols, which made getting into routines and fostering a sustainable relationship with students that much more challenging. And yet through it all, whether behind a mask or not, our staff are coming in with smiles. They're getting into the needs of each individual student. They're supporting the students and also their colleagues. And they're really just making it a place that every single school in the Braintree Public Schools is a place that, again, both students and staff are happy to come to and want to be moving forward on this journey with everybody. So for all of those reasons, on behalf of the entire Braintree Public Schools administration, we say a giant thank you to all of our teachers, to our nurses, to our administrative assistants, and to our lunch heroes, who are really the ones, again, making, making everything work day in and day out.
Very well said. Any comments or questions about the appreciation?
I have a little something.
Oh, yeah, of course.
A little something. Just want to read into the record. On Braintree, honors it celebrates Braintree Public Schools' teaching staff in recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week 2022. Being known that the town of Braintree has by extends its great appreciation and gratitude for the hardworking, dedicated Braintree Public School teaching staff. As mayor of the town of Braintree, on behalf of residents, we thank you. This is, I'll give this to the-
To the least deserving guy.
Thank you.
I can make a chorus. Mary Ann. Put you on the spot. We're, I'm so sorry that we forgot about Administrative Appreciation Day last week. So you know how much we appreciate you.
We do.
Mary Ann is, yes, Mary Ann is the, is the, is the administrative assistant for the school committee as well. We appreciate you very much. Catch up with you. And as always, you know, you know, as you, as you said, Courtney, you know, we, we couldn't do anything without, you know, the teachers and the, and the nurses and administrator, you know, the, appreciate, excuse me, the administrative assistants. They really do, they are the, the face of the, of the schools. You know, when people come into the building and they have questions, the administrative assistants are really like the backbone of the schools. So, you know, I'm sure the PTOs are taking care of their, and I'm sure that you took care of Mary Ann and whomever else needs to be taken care of. So again, appreciate, goes without saying that we appreciate them every day, not just during these particular days and weeks. So thank you. Thank them all every day for their work. Moving on to Gifts to Schools.
Nope, nope. We have others. We have others. Always more.
Thank you, Buck.
Just a few more updates for the committee. I wanted to let each school committee member know to be on the lookout for an invitation to our graduation ceremony. It'll be taking place on Saturday, June 4th at 10:00 a.m. with an inclement weather date of Sunday, June 5th. So that formal invitation will be coming to you, and we're eager to hear your response as to whether or not you're able to celebrate with us in person again on Saturday, June 4th. I also wanted to let the committee know that Bashy is going to be putting on a vaping presentation taking place on May 25th at 6:30 p.m. at East Middle School. So that is open to any member of the public, to parents, to guardians, to staff members, anybody wanting to hear this presentation really about the 4-1-1 of vaping. So I do believe a Parents' Prayer message went out earlier today, but just wanted to make sure that everybody had that, had that piece of information in case you were interested in joining. We're also thrilled to say that Art Fest is back. So on May 23rd, in the BHS lobby, from 6:00 to 7:30, we're going to have an open Arts Fest, again, in that lobby area, where any members of the public, again, parents, students, staff, can all come and celebrate the great work that all of the students in our art department have been working on throughout the year. So that should be a great celebratory event. And finally, just wanted to make everybody aware that our next tentative school committee meeting will also be on May 23rd at 6:30 p.m., just for your calendars. That is everything.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the communications and accommodations from the committee? There you go. Okay, now I move on to Gifts to Schools.
We want, Madam Chair, to hear about the Liberty Project first, or would you want to go directly into the list?
Let's listen to the Liberty Project first.
Okay, in that case, I ask Principal Tara Boning to join us.
Thank you for having me this evening. I so badly want to jump ahead and welcome one of my new colleagues, but I know it's a statue, so I'm not going to. That's it, I'm not jumping ahead. So this evening, I was here to present for your consideration approval for the Liberty PTO Gifts to Schools, which is in the form of a project of an outdoor garden and classroom space. So we did have a few folks come out to our space. In, just to rewind, a few years ago, we had talked about having an outdoor garden space, and we did some fundraising efforts for it, and they were going really well. Parents are very supportive, community is extremely supportive, teachers, the students are excited for it. And then COVID came, and we weren't able to spend the money as we once had in terms of like field trips or people coming into the building. So over the years, we've continued our fundraising efforts, and we've been able to earmark some additional funds to not only have the outdoor garden space, but also include an outdoor classroom space. So this particular piece of the building here is, if you are looking out the cafeteria windows, which is really a great spot for having a garden and outdoor space. And in this, we would have a bunch of raised beds. There would be two areas for seating, so there would be some granite blocks for maybe a class to have a little bit of an outdoor, say, classroom experience. Along with that, there would be river rock that students would be able to sit on, and maybe they would have an art class outside at the same time. So the space is significant enough to support not only raised beds, which are included in the plans, but also having two outdoor classroom spaces. Ultimately, the goal is to beautify the campus. And being that this is right in the front, it would really do wonders for the actual look of when you pull into that building in the front. One thing to note is that in an era of everything being so high-tech, it's really nice for this project to sort of go back to being an outdoor space for students and staff members to enjoy, so.
I drew the picture. What do you think? So this would be, in essence, an in-kind gift that you'd be receiving, that you truly cannot receive until it's actually completed. Do you want to talk about the contractor and things?
Sure. We had, the Liberty PTO has been really helpful in reaching out to different contractors in the area and having them come in and give us their plans and their thoughts, designs, then also quoting on the project. So after having that happen several times, Needle Brothers came in. They were able to go through the whole space. They did lay it out for us on the ground, so it's spray paint. They showed us where the walkway would go. There would be a very large circular patio. I'm going to call it a patio area, but circular area where there would be some space for students to stand, sit. The granite blocks would be towards one side of the, the space, and that would be more of like a classroom space. And then they were able to say, all of our raised beds would be linear going down one side and across the other. We do have water right outside in one of those spaces, so it's, it's really a good spot for it. And then ultimately be able to have a fenced space, because we wouldn't want wild animals coming in and ruining our garden.
Are there any questions from the committee?
Yeah, when you find out how to keep those wild animals out of the garden, let me know.
I won't be able to figure it out, but it could be a student project.
Okay. One comment, Madam Chair. We've seen some of these outdoor spaces at other elementary schools. I think Boss has one. I think there are a few others.
Yeah, certainly there.
And being able to utilize that, I mean, I don't know how you keep it focused, but I wouldn't be able to deal with that. But it's nice to see that we're using the outside spaces more efficiently for other uses rather than just, say, athletics and whatnot.
Right.
I'm looking forward to it. It's going to be nice. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing it. Very exciting. I know Highlands has tried. I tried doing it with my Girl Scouts years ago. Thanks to you guys, PTO, awesome job. Thanks to the Needle Brothers coming back to their community. I know the Needle Brothers not in the company, but one of the brothers lives in Braintree and is part of the Liberty community. So it'll be exciting to see the finished product. They do really good work.
Right. Yeah, we're certainly looking forward to it, of course.
Any other questions or comments?
I think it's a great project, and it's very, a great use of space. And yeah, we'll be excited to see how it, how it turns out. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Sure. Is there a timeline?
So right now, what we were hoping is to get approval, to be able to reach back out to the company. We didn't, certainly didn't want to have something on the schedule and then not be approved. So they were, originally, they would have been ready to start in the spring, which actually didn't fit our schedule, just because we're in school and students are there. But the hope is actually that they would be able to get there in the summertime, which is the perfect time with the grounds being free and available for them to do the work without interfering with any of the learning that takes place around the school year.
And then, yeah, the same thing. I would just want to obviously thank the PTO for their fundraising efforts.
Yes.
And for, you know, making this, hopefully it'll come to fruition. I don't think anyone on this committee is, is going to be opposed to this. It's a great opportunity. And again, it'll be an in-kind, so when the, when the job is done, we will actually accept the in-kind donation at that time. So we can informally, yeah, conceptual approval. Yeah, just can move forward, just that you can move forward with it. So all those in favor of the proposed Liberty Project? Any opposeds? That is unanimous. Again, thank you for being here. Thank you for having it. And again, thank, please thank the PTO and everybody for their efforts.
Certainly. Appreciate it.
Forward to seeing the finished product.
As do I. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Gifts to Schools. South Middle School, one check in the amount of $1.43 from Benefit Mobile, Inc. We can do these individually since there's only four. Do I have a motion to approve? Most famous Cobblemane, second one is Saros. All those in favor? Any opposeds? That is unanimous. Braintree High School, one check in the amount of $7,000 from South Shore Workforce School-to-Career Connecting Activities Initiative, Initiative Grant for Braintree High School.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cobblemane.
Second.
Second by Mr. Devon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposeds? That is unanimous. Highlands Elementary School, one check in the amount of $50 from Virginia Grassa and Andrew Richardson in memory of Sylvia Martin to the Highlands Elementary School to be used in their library or resource room.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon, a second by Ms. Cobblemane. All those in favor? Any opposeds? That is unanimous. And Bay State Textiles, two checks totaling $84. I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemane, second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor? Any opposeds? That is unanimous. As always, thank you all for the gifts. Moving on to the superintendent and staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, again. So this evening, we have the distinct pleasure of recognizing two outstanding students from Braintree High School. Annually, through the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, we're allowed to issue awards for academic excellence. And as we have done in the past, we are recognizing two individuals this evening. I'm going to ask them to come have a seat at the table. One is Evan Braho, and the other is Cooper Emerson. And Ms. Miller is going to tell you a little bit about how impressive they are compared to your superintendent.
We're in the same boat.
So I will start by just announcing to the committees that this award in particular is given to the BHS senior ranked academically number one and number two based on GPA at the end of semester one. We did award, award both Evan and Cooper the awards back in January, but we wanted to make sure that we had an in-person meeting that we could bring them in safely and celebrate, that would work for everyone's schedule. So that's why we're officially celebrating everything that they've done right now, although they received the word back, the award back in January. I will also say that I'm thrilled to announce that while the award is based on the end of semester one, Evan and Cooper are currently still number one and number two academically in this, in this new class. So I will start with Evan. Evan, and I'm going to start with a quote from his guidance counselor, Ms. Donzal. Evan is without a doubt one of the most passionate, respectful, bright, and hardworking students on my caseload. That is pretty impressive in and of itself. Academically, he's self-motivated, enjoys passionate discussions in class, and is inquisitive in nature. While he's not, when he's not busy studying, Evan enjoys being involved in many other activities, including volunteering at the Thayer Public Library as a member of the teen advisory group, volunteering as a book picker for prisoners, serving as a member of the BHS science team, and also serving as a member of mock trial. For you. Of Cooper. For Cooper, in talking with his guidance counselor, Ms. Mazza, was described as humble, kind, polite, and an overall great person. Academically, Cooper is a member of the National Honor Society, as well as the French National Honor Society. In 11th grade, he was the recipient of the Harvard Book Award and the Rensselaer Book Award. He also served as the BHS representative for Massachusetts Boys State. And when he's, when he's not busy studying, Cooper serves as the National Honor Society president, cross-country and track and field captain, student council representative, and is also a member of the teen advisory group. Very impressive.
Very impressive resumes, yes. First of all, congratulations to both of you. Well done. Congratulations to your parents that you have here. I don't know if you want to introduce them.
How it goes.
Thanks for that. I saw you both at NHS. You both led, so you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about your future plans?
I'm, was admitted to Brown, early decision, and I'm hoping to study neuroscience there and eventually go on to med school to become a psychiatrist.
Excellent.
I'm planning to attend Northeastern and studying chemistry and possibly, like possibly chemistry and physics in the future.
Very impressive. You make us proud, obviously. You make us extremely proud. So thank you for all your work. Thank you for your commitment. Again, your resume is, both your resumes are quite impressive. Your volunteer work as well as all the stuff that you've done at the high school itself. Does anybody else in the committee have any questions or want to congratulate our number one and number two?
I just want to say, congratulations, guys. I mean, it's a pretty impressive accomplishment, you know. Going through high school, I could never accomplish what you guys did in the morning, too. Very impressive. I know a lot of work that goes into it, so congrats on that. I hope big things for you guys in the future.
Thank you so much. Saros?
I just want to reiterate what they have both said. Congratulations. Best of luck in your future endeavors. You know, you've gone through a lot during your high school that most people we've never seen. You've made it through. You've made it on the other side, and, you know, good luck.
Of course.
Thank you. Well, you guys are part of history. You're in Braintree now, so I think about how much work you both have had to put in to achieve this. It's just amazing. So, and we know how great Braintree is academically as well. And I think that, you know, it's amazing to be in a position that you guys both are in. I love the majors that you guys have taken. I think that's exceptional. So I wish you guys the best of luck, and I'll see you on graduation.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? You have citations?
I have official citations. So Evan, congratulations. Quite a list of accomplishment. Cooper, the same. Congratulations. And truly, that's the luck in terms of what happens next for you guys, which will be outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, too.
You for being here. We will see you at graduation. Again, thank your parents, because I'm sure you're where you are because your parents are here and supported you. You're more than welcome to leave. If you'd like to leave, you're, you're more than welcome to sit through the rest of the agenda if you'd like. But it's, I'm sure you probably have a lot of homework, because I'm sure you're taking a lot of challenging classes. So if you feel like you need to go home and get to your studies, feel free. We won't mind if you leave.
Thank you.
There is a man that knows how to exit stage left. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Oh, there you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It's too funny how the kids are all like.
It comes with a disallow. Trust me.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
So, Madam Chair and in school committee, the next item on the agenda, it is my pleasure this evening in person to introduce Dr. Caitlin Long. So, Dr. Long, if you could come have a seat at the table. As we discussed at our last meeting, Dr. Long has graciously accepted the position of principal for Highlands Elementary School starting in July of this year, replacing the long tenure of Dr. Pelletier. Just to remind you of how we got to Dr. Long, we had a search committee that was led by Tara Boning that included John Rien, Principal Morrison, Julie Bartlett from the PTO, Gorman Lee, Social Studies Director, Lindsay Roth, also from the PTO, Meg Aborn, who's a teacher over at Highlands, Deb Crowley, who's the administrative assistant, Joe Kaiser, and Beth West. And they took their job very seriously. We went through multiple iterations of the search. And they very quickly came to the conclusion that they had found their person in Dr. Long. So we are extremely excited to have Dr. Long join us this year. You've seen her resume in the past, but Dr. Long received her doctorate in curriculum and instruction from Boston College. She is currently serving as the Assistant Principal at Proprietary Elementary School in Framingham. Highlands and Dr. Long were fortunate enough to get together this afternoon, where she was able to meet some staff and take a tour with Dr. Pelletier, and then meet with some PTO parents after school before coming here this evening. So I hope you all join me in welcoming Dr. Long to our school system.
Welcome, Dr. Long. Welcome to Braintree. Welcome to the Highland School.
Thank you so much.
Thank you to the, to the committee for their, search committee for all their work. Obviously, you're, you're the right choice, Sarah. Right choice. You want to tell us a little about yourself, why you wanted to come to Braintree?
Sure. I'm so, so excited to become a member of the, of the Highlands community. I have been in Framingham for the last three years. And while I'm, I'm sad to leave in my current role, it was so apparent what an amazing community this was at every step of the process. And I brought with me a map of Highlands Elementary that one of the kindergarten students drew and gave to me today and said that he-
Scales.
So that as I'm like getting to know, because I said I'm going to be touring the building all summer, because I have to know where all the classrooms are. He said, well, here is a map, but then he goes, but it doesn't have all the parts on the school on it yet. I have to draw the other parts. So, so he's going to add some other pictures for me later. But every classroom that I went into with Dr. P, someone raised their hand, because she had prepped them, like, think of something, you know, to tell Dr. Long about something that you really love about Highlands. And in every single classroom, someone raised their hand to say, the teachers in this building are so nice, or everyone in this building is so nice. And it was really, really clear how loved all of the kids in the building feel. And, and that just made me super, super excited to join the community, because that's how all kids should feel in school. And that was really, really, really clear to me this afternoon at Highlands. And it was really amazing to meet a lot of the families after school this afternoon as well. So I've now had a chance to meet some of the students, most of the staff, and a few family members. And I'm, I couldn't be more excited.
We're excited now, too. Very nice to meet you in person. So thank you, staying here. Of course. And sorry, America, of course.
After this, remember, there is a rivalry between Liberty and Highlands. My boys went there, and you're right, it is a wonderful, wonderful school, and it's full of love and great teachers. And keep that rivalry going, because, you know, it's important, because when the kids are playing sports and stuff, you know, it's a part of, part of the fun. But it is a great school, and I'm really, I'm glad that you made the choice to come here. And I think you can do a great job running the school, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Mick.
Congrats on the new job. So exciting. My son, I come from a family of Highlands. My husband graduated, his brother did. My children all have gone to Highlands. My son is in his last year, next year.
Okay.
So we'll get one year with you. Very exciting. He was very upset he couldn't come today because I was grocery shopping after work. But welcome. We're so excited, you know, for the future of the school. It's a great school. The kids love it, and they look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And I'm Chip. I'm in. Yeah, thank you. Also having two nephews that went to the Highlands, actually three, I'm sorry. One of you left out, and I won't name him, so you won't hate me. But it's a wonderful school. I think you coming from the outside, bringing new ideas in, that'll help, shall we say, move the needle more than a little bit. It's a wonderful community, the neighborhood, whatnot. Although drop off and pick up is like, oh, God, get on it, like some of our schools. But I think you're going to like the collaborative spirit there and with, with some of the other principals. I think you're going to like that a lot. I hope you enjoy your time here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? No?
Just welcome.
Welcome. Congratulations. We really appreciate it. With you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Dr. Long.
Thank you for being here.
Talk to you soon.
Hi, Matt.
All right, next up in your packets, we have some, um, it's the return of international trips. As you all know, these have not really been an option over the last couple of years. But as things have improved globally, I think we're now looking at opportunities to get our kids abroad again to experience things in other countries that they haven't been able to do for the last couple of years. So in your packet, you'll, you'll have information regarding three trips. One to Costa Rica, one to Quebec City in Montreal, and a third to London, Normandy and Paris. And we have Zach Rittland, who can represent and answer any questions about the World War II, London, Normandy, Paris trip. And we also have Kevin Jamison, who I'm sure can answer questions about Costa Rica and the immersion trip there. And I don't think we have you don't even know where you're going, do you? Hey, hey, hey. So, uh, if, if we have questions about the proposals, again, these gentlemen are more than capable of answering them. There's similar trips we've had in the past, but I want to make sure you guys have the right information in order to be able to decide whether approving or not.
Costa Rica is new, right?
Yes. Yeah, we changed, usually we go Spain, but just the climate and you know, with COVID, we just thought let's try something new this time. Let's go to Costa Rica this time. And so usually we have a homestay. We're not going to have a homestay this time just to be extra safe with just anything COVID, so I think it's a little bit safer.
Any other questions? I have a few questions, but I'll open up the committee.
I just want to make a comment. I know you guys, I know you guys, you guys have been doing a great job with that and I know the kids love those trips. So I'm glad you guys bring it back. You guys are coming back on to work because I know it's such a big part of what kids look forward to. And I know you guys do a great job. Even teachers love coming with them too. So I'm glad you guys are stepping up and doing it again after all this stuff, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Devon?
Thank you. We know in the past, this was always looked, looked at like a highlight for most of the students. And this is just part of us getting back to our normalcy. I, I know more than a few times, we've had more than a few volunteers from on this panel willing to go to chaperone. It's, it's wonderful to hear what the kids have to say when they come back. How it really moves the needle for them with their different experiences maybe. I'm looking to hear what they have to say about Costa Rica coming back. I mean, that's not that far on the map. It's only that far. But you're looking to say, um, it's just us, shall we say, getting our children to think internationally again, which I think is a good thing. Thank you very much for the hard work you put in.
Thank you.
Yep. I have led a trip, so 2005, I led a trip to Costa Rica from Brain Tree. So I've done that, yeah.
Okay.
2005, okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I would just like to say I am very happy to see that the students have this opportunity. Just the historical factor of the trip to London and Normandy and seeing Omaha Beach. I, I know when we visited Omaha Beach, those craters are still there and, and it's just, it's, uh, very profound to be able to see what a how difficult that day was. So I think it's a great opportunity for the children. We have, uh, we love to, our family loves to travel. We, we spent time in Costa Rica. It's a great country. And I'm, I'm sure that the kids and the chaperones will enjoy it very much as well as, as the Quebec City and Montreal. Thank you very much for, for doing this. It's a wonderful opportunity for the children and something that they'll always remember.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have a few questions. For the Costa Rica trip, are you using the same?
We're using the same company.
Before?
Yeah, Experitus, yep.
Okay. And I was happy to see the Quebec City. The eighth graders that normally would have gone a couple of years ago, didn't have the opportunity to go because of the state of the world.
Also goes to Montreal.
Okay.
The eighth graders, they used to only go to Quebec City. This is Montreal and Quebec City. And, and it'll be tailored more to high school as opposed to seventh and eighth year graders as well.
But since those eighth graders didn't even have the opportunity back
Right, yes.
Potentially could be those same kids. We have an up trip now. Different trip, but still a, a good opportunity. And then the World War II, the London, it's the same as what it is, what it was last time, right? Does it?
Yeah, exact same itinerary.
Okay.
Yep, this will be the, the second time we ran it. We got approved back in 2019 for a 2021 return. We had 85 kids signed up, Cooper being one of them. So, so it was a real, that was a real bummer to have to, Jack was too, by the way. That was a real bummer to have to call that one off, but I'm looking forward to going back. Yeah, exact same itinerary.
Great. And what's the timeline? So this is the first reading. I'll ask the committee if we're okay with approving it and, you know, rather than bring it back for a second reading, if, if everyone's comfortable here. But if we approve it now, when is the sign up and would you let people know now or is it something in the fall?
Uh, I spoke with Dr. Scully and he would like to, um, organize before the end of the school year, a, a parent meeting with, with all the field trips presenting at the same time. That date set to be determined pending upon approval. Once, once there's an approval, um, there'll, there'll be some word to parents about like a parent night to come and see what's offered. Yeah, um, for the Costa Rica trip as well, if they sign up before June 15th, they get a $200 discount.
Excellent, okay.
About the early bird discount.
Oh, that's a good thing. And then fundraising, is there any kind of organized fundraising or is?
Uh, in the past, we've, we've done pie fundraisers, which for some kids like really did well and for some kids gave them like 20 bucks, but we did have an organized fundraiser the first time. Um, and I've also been doing some research on what's called Rhodes Scholarship, but it's R O A D scholarships. So if kids want to write essays online, they could potentially get like a couple of grand go towards their trip. So I'm going to really press that on them if they want to do it. And, um, fundraising is not my expertise, so, um, I mean, it's, we're, we can't do it. I haven't, I'm not very good at it. But, um, but also Experitus does offer financial aid for, um, you know, need-based financial aid.
And there's always the insurance.
Yes.
They can sign up for the insurance.
Yep, the insurance is included.
Something were to happen. Um, my daughter was signed up to go to, um, France in 2010 and the volcano and
Oh, yeah.
It erupted or whatever and like the trip got canceled the day they were scheduled to leave.
Yeah.
As you know, Mr. Jameson, my son, went to Barcelona.
Yep. Almost got stuck there.
2012, 2013.
Yeah, 2012, yeah.
2012, and that was a home visit. He still has stayed in touch with that family, so.
Yeah.
These are great opportunities. Very excited that these are back. And, um, again, I'm going to ask the committee if everyone's comfortable. I know this is the first reading, but if everyone's comfortable with voting on it for tonight for approval. I don't see any opposed, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, go forth with these trips.
Of all three?
Yes.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon. I have a second, Madam Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Keep us posted.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And if you need any chaperones?
Conflict of interest.
Costa Rica.
Going there?
Thank you very much. All right.
So, the, Madam Chair, the next item is an annual item on the agenda as the School Committee needs to appoint a representative to South Shore Educational Collaborative. In the past and in this year as well, it has always been the superintendent that has been appointed. If somebody really wanted to take it from me, you would not hurt my feelings. However, I am happy to continue in this capacity. It is typically attended by superintendents in, in certain districts where kids that we have in district might need that particular service. So it would require a vote of the school committee to have me continue as the representative for next year.
Do I have a motion to, are you a quick question?
Yeah.
Sarah, I mean, sorry, Ms. Cobbleman.
Sorry. What does rep, what does that entail, being a representative?
So it is a monthly board meeting.
Okay.
Uh, and so I attend every single month. And again, the other members of the board exclusively of superintendents from the surrounding area that send kids to the South Shore Collaborative. We vote and oversee things such as the budget, uh, such as personnel changes over at the South Shore Collaborative. There's an executive director there that gives us updates. So it, it's, it's not a large lift on my part. But again, we send a number of kids there and so being part of that, it gives me a good indication of how it's going over there and what the challenges are. So for instance, as we came into this year, having attended those meetings, what we knew is that they, uh, the South Shore Collaborative was struggling to staff. And as a result, the number of placements that they could receive was very much diminished from years past, which has changed the way that we have operated this year, knowing that we couldn't send kids there because they just couldn't take anymore. So we, you know, what we did in turn was we developed some programs in-house because we knew that reality. So that information is very helpful to us and being part of that process is helpful to me.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Motion to appoint, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Lynch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Sorry, Jim.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Any other administrative updates?
Not at this point, Madam Chair.
Moving on to from the School Committee, School Committee Student Representative Updates. Would you like to share?
Basically, that he, and it picks up everything.
Yeah. How much to update from students at Brain Tree High School this time? Just everyone's really preparing for the end of school activities as they're approaching the start of AP exam week, so a lot of students prepare for those. Um, and overall, students are just getting excited for the events that kind of mark the end of the year. Like I know the seniors are especially excited for their graduation in prom. And then juniors like me are excited for our prom coming up. And we're just really happy that this year has gone so smoothly with the help of all the administration. And I just want to say thank you for everyone for making this year run so smoothly, coming back from such a difficult situation.
Thank you. Excellent.
And I just wanted to add on to it. So AP exams are starting this week and next week. And although it's a very stressful time for a lot of students, the teachers, the AP teachers have done a great job in preparing students as well as making them feel comfortable and ready to take these exams. So just want to say thank you to all of them and, yeah.
Very well said. How many days left for seniors?
Um, I think it's 15 tomorrow. Yeah, it's a fun day.
Who's counting?
Oh, yes. 15 tomorrow. Excellent. Thank you for your updates. Appreciate it. Um, moving on, Policy Education Subcommittee update. Ms. Tuffy?
The Policy Education Subcommittee meeting was and we will meet on May 19th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Finance and Operations, that will be me. The Finance and Operations met on April 28th. We voted unanimously to move the merger of the Maintenance Department with favorable, favorable action to this full committee tonight as a first reading. Our next School Committee meeting is Monday, 23rd. And before that meeting, there were a number of details that we'd like to work out. I know Chief of Staff, Tob, is here as well as representatives from Facilities and DPW. So there were some questions that came out that we had shared with Chief of Staff Tob back in March. And I know that everybody in the committee has the answers to these questions. If there's any additional questions, we can cover those. But some of the questions that we had, we had or some recommendations that were made was that we create some kind of a transition team to talk about, um, next steps, creating a timeline. There were questions that were raised by our business manager regarding revolving accounts, utilities, the capital budget plan that's currently before the Town Council Ways and Means, among some other things. So before our May 23rd meeting, maybe we could, um, share those questions and we can, we can have, I don't know if you're prepared to answer any questions this evening. If any of the members of the School Committee have any questions that they want to raise now, since we have members here in, in attendance? Or we can send those questions and then on the 23rd, it'll be the second reading. But if anybody has questions tonight, by all means, please ask Ms. Cobbleman.
Um, I just, I have a couple.
Someone come up to the microphone. Mike McGurty and Nicole Tobb.
Everybody.
Hi, thanks for being here. Um, just a couple of questions. I was looking, you know, through the questions that were asked by the Subcommittee and, and the answers. And I noticed that a lot of the, um, answers are prefaced with, we would have to, you know, do an assessment, allow for a full assessment, um, is a first priority type of thing. Is that something that you think should be done before you merge the Maintenance Departments? I mean, isn't this kind of, I mean, it just seems like if, if you're relying on an assessment after the fact, it seems like it would be helpful to have an assessment first.
So thank you, Ms. Cobbleman. Good evening, everybody. Nicole Tobb with, um, Mike McGurty, the Director of the Facilities Department. And also just by way of introduction, we have Jim Arsnoth with us this evening, the Director of the Department of Public Works, which is the department that will house, uh, the proposed consolidated Maintenance Department. It is Ben Hulk, the Assistant Director of DPW, and Justin Zahn, the Assistant Director of the Facilities Department. So thank you for the opportunity to, to present this evening for the first reading. I know that this is a, a proposal that has been in the works for quite some time with a lot of, uh, thought behind it and really trying to think about the value that a, this proposal and this combined department could bring both to the schools and to the town. And the number one priority is an assessment of all of the buildings because in order for this department to establish kind of the ongoing priorities and identify distinction, important distinctions between corrective maintenance and preventative maintenance and moving to a more proactive system, they have to know what they have and they have to know what the buildings look like, what conditions the buildings are in. And that, you know, I won't speak for the mayor, but he has said it before, he walks every school from boiler room to rooftop to really get a sense of the condition of some of these properties in order to best deploy resources through this department. So, yes, the sooner the better, I suppose is the short answer for the assessment. But realistically, the Facilities Team doesn't have access to these properties absent a vote of this body to combine with the vote of the Town Council to establish the consolidated department. So we couldn't do it without the formal consolidation happening. And I, and through the chair, I would ask, uh, Mr. McGurty to expand a little bit on what that assessment would look like and what value it would bring.
Sure. First, um, what we would do is break down each of the buildings individually, the schools. We'd bring an assessment team in, which would include a member of the, uh, fire safety, building inspectional services, electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, our own staff, electrical and plumbing personnel. And we would go through the buildings and we would assess the mechanicals, the structure, all the other electrical components of the building and come up with a plan for each of the buildings on what the assessments are and what the major needs are that have to be fixed now versus ones that can be fixed later on. And put that package together so that we would know when we sit down after we've merged, how we're going to put the plan of, uh, the first year of how we would activate and how we put the, uh, program together to, to start the repair work and prioritize exactly what would need to be done. Obviously, working directly with the superintendent and his staff, uh, in the School Committee so they would understand the parameters for which we would attack these programs and try to get these buildings in shape. We did it on the town side and that's really the process that we took and it worked very well for us. So that, um, we're ahead of the curve now. It was a tough first two years, um, setting those parameters on how to attack these issues before us. So we would, uh, basically adopt the same programs that we did five years ago.
Okay, um, yeah, I guess that was my question about just, are you able to do the assessment before the, before the consolidation or no?
Well, I think the consolidation portion is a long process. You've got to put staff together. You've got to write job descriptions. The union contracts are up. There'll be some job description changes. There'll be some new jobs put in there. So it's a whole package. While that's all going on, setting up communication lines with the superintendent, the principals and all the different schools on how they're going to respond and react to problems that occur. Emergency situations that require service, who do they call? How do they get in touch? Who are the individuals? Things like that. Introduce ourselves so that the staff knows who we are and we get a chance to, to know the staff as well. It's a lodge custodial of five, I believe. We'd like to go through what the jobs are going in so we know what everyone does in advance. Read the, um, I don't know, the job descriptions, um, what their day-to-day activities are, what the schools are looking for as far as their needs. And reach out to the, uh, the staff in the school and see where they believe, uh, changes could be made or what they'd like to see changed or repaired, fixed. made or what they'd like to see changed or repaired, fixed, things like that.
Okay, thank you. And one other quick question. I know in the question and answer it says, is existing projects completed by the facilities department, which was American Legion, Doarty Gym, the Art Center and Town Hall? Would it be possible to get a tour of those? Could the school committee see those properties, what was done and stuff like that?
That would be awesome.
I think we would.
Absolutely. We would be happy to do that, sure. We've been tied in and connected with the schools since we began our operation in 2017. On May 1st, actually, was the first day that the facilities department opened up. We got our first call to involve with these schools when we were asked to go out and take a look at the bleachers. And on that day, we had them condemned because they were unsafe. So we put our team together, we got a structural engineer, we got to set up plans, we put it out to bid, we got the stadium repaired, got it open for the homecoming game, made it safe. We stepped the clock up another year in November of 2018. It was an issue with a couple roofs that had blown off some of your schools, one at Ross and one at South. We were the team that responded to that, those problems. We got the contractor out there. It happened on a Friday night. Sunday morning, we had a contracting crew of 22 people out there at the Ross School. They removed the debris from the building, they prepped it for a new temporary roof. We did the same thing at South. Ross was open on that Wednesday. That Thursday was a holiday. We could have opened South, but they chose to stay closed for that whole week to do additional work, but they could have opened that same week. So we were able to help get the schools open within a five-day period. And there was some serious damage there. It was quite a bit of work that was done. And we responded quickly and we took care of that situation. Last August, we got a call about some water in the electrical room. I'm sure you heard about that. The mayor called us in, told us to prep the area, do what we had to do to get it safe, which we did. While we were there, we did an assessment of some of the other plumbing in the building. We found out there was a number of issues, that the building was not zoned properly and some of the valves were deficient. So we went in, spent about four months in the school. We changed over 500 valves on off time. We did not disrupt any of the classwork in the building. We worked after hours, weekends, holidays. So we have a fairly good proven track record of response to the school's needs and we understand that they would continue to be the number one priority of the facilities department moving forward, should we combine. Because it's not like we're getting your schools, you're also getting us. You know, we have, we're a small group, but you have a small group as well. Combined, we can be more efficient, we can eventually save the town some money, and I think we'll get better services.
Well, yeah, and I appreciate that because I think everybody knows that the age and the condition of the schools and what they are. And so I think we all support having an assessment done of every building, going through and seeing what needs to be done and working on that. So I think everyone would welcome that type of a project. Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Cobbleman.
The Chair, could I ask Mr. Cronin to clarify what the concerns or issues might be with the revolving accounts and capital budget with this transition?
Only that there's been no discussion yet as to exactly what gets turned over. Revolving account is basically set up for maintenance. The income comes from rental of the buildings. It seems like that should go, it's stuff that we've talked about. We have capital, some of which is for building maintenance, most likely go. We have projects lined up for the summer that should go. MSBA is all about building, whether it's the roofs or south, that should most likely go. But none of those discussions have taken place yet. And I just think it makes sense to kind of have that stuff within the next couple of weeks so when you have your second reading and vote, you can actually see what's going to happen.
That's helpful. I do think that having that transition team and having those discussions before the second reading is very important. You know, this seems to me like it could be a benefit to the town, but we want to make sure that we proceed very carefully and have everything in place before we move ahead. And we also want to make sure that as time goes by, we're assessing to see if there are, this merger is creating more efficient use of our materials and manpower and if it is resulting in a cost saving.
Thank you, Ms. Toffey. Ms. Sarris?
Just kind of had a question. We did our security assessment, which they went through top to bottom throughout the town, every building, the school buildings. Have you guys taken a look at that? Because simple things like door jams that are broken or doorknobs that are broken, windows, have you guys seen that full document or started?
I've not seen that document. I was a building inspector for 20 years. I've walked through these buildings, I've walked through these schools, I know your buildings well. They have some serious issues that have to be addressed. You have fire doors at your high school that are broken, have been broken for a long time. There's a number of issues. That's why we do the assessment in-house with our own people. So it's not, we're not bringing in some outside team and spending $200,000 to get a nice assessment catalog of our buildings that really will never be looked at again. And we put one together and it will be part of a working program. So we have looked at it. I've not seen your assessment via security, but.
I mean, it's not, we hired, as the town hired that. And I mean, it's got everything from entering the building that would be kind of helpful and useful in what you're doing.
Sure. We did a new entry rate at Braintree Police Station in-house. If you've gone to the police station, you see the work that we've done there as well. So we're capable of doing a lot of the work that I'm sure that they're going to be requiring in that report, which would take down the costs of the overall package. Normally, that's what we do. We can't do it all. If there's work within a bidded project that we can do in-house and save money, that's what we do. So we've done quite a bit of that throughout the town. That's how we've been successful. So we would continue that same type of work for schools.
And if I may, through the chair, I can offer a real-time example of that and the value of having kind of that expertise in-house. We've been talking a lot about the fire station, the headquarters, and looking at the total cost to renovate that facility and thinking about areas that we can take, that we can take some of the pressure off of the reno budget by bringing the work in-house. And Mike and his team have been working to renovate the Galvin House on Washington Street across from Town Hall, almost entirely using our in-house staff and converting that space so that it can be used for living quarters for firefighters while we're doing the renovation. And so having that expertise and that skillset has let the team handle a lot of that type of work in-house. And I'm confident that if they looked through the security plan, they could pick out easily a large majority of items that we could take on in-house to save on costs and then potentially also expand the scope of the work you're able to do because we're taking some of the pressure off the budget using the team.
Thank you, Ms. Sarris. Mr. Devon?
Madam Chair, thank you. I want to make a couple of statements because I think it's important we figure out how we got here. All right? When I went to Braintree High School in the 70s, yes, that long ago, there were at least 25 to 30 people that maintained our schools. We had about 13 or 14 schools, so we have 10 now, something to that effect. So and some have said that we have a smaller student population, but the lights don't count heads, the heat doesn't count heads. Those buildings are on 24/7. With the change of our government, our first mayor, Sullivan, it's got upon himself to give us an extra million dollars out of the mayor's office. And that's been continued by this current administration. So it's nice to see that the mayors know that this is important work to be done. I think unlike finance where they say, what past performance is not an indicator of future performance.
Sorry.
It's a good one, though. I'll dance, that's all good. I've been guilty more than a few times. I think it's important that we know that in construction, what you've done in the past is something that people can look towards. I've known this group for, what, Mike, since we were 12, 13 years old, brothers and whatnot. I know you guys, you be honest and honorable, and your crew too. I know how hard they work. I know that based on their past performance, that in spite of them having the best guys, they're still going to have some bumpy bumps in the road. I think goals have to be established. Those goals are not just for saving money. What about saving the assets? I believe if we've done a better job with South and East, those major renovation projects that we had to took up with the MSBA might not have been as extensive. If we, what is it, in maintenance, it is truth that one ounce of prevention is worth two pounds of cure. It just is. And the math bears out. It's nice to see that you actually use CM and PM and the correct methodology. Thank you. Greatly, great to be seen. But we've seen where Mike's group has, shall we say, interfaced with the schools on certain times and helped us. I do think that if we go into this just saying that we're going to save money, I think that's foolhardy, that we should look at how we're going to protect the assets, which is incredibly important and we're responsible for those. And they will wind up being, shall we say, responsible with us. Another thing I think when it comes to goals is the fact that in their one, three and five-year plan, that they, if you do not look towards doubling or even tripling your group, you're going to have to take a hard look at that. At one point in time, myself and Mr. Lee talked about at some point in time, we might have to look towards moving more people into the maintenance staff because we're just not getting it done in a timely manner. Now, when you start talking about corrective maintenance, that's when you're fixing something that's already broken. You are using that two pounds of cure. If we go, we assess these buildings, which is extremely important, and we put forth what the most important things forward and prioritize, and we start maintaining these things in a methodology, we will save money over the long run. In that, saving the asset. But I think it's foolhardy to just say, count nickels in time. It's the money we could have spent if something fails. We know that switchgear up at the high school, we've had two issues with it. If we maintained it properly, as well as some of the piping systems, we would not have had that tough conversation that I was very impressed to see my superintendent and my mayor talking tellingly about switchgears, the different phases and whatnot. It was pretty impressive. He had us fooled. And the fact that the bell guy just.
Just ready for an hour.
And that's touching on my last point and then I'm gone. The fact that I think his group brings the water department, inspectional services, bell. It's not just their gentleman, it's the relationships they have with other departments within this town. I want them to be successful because it's not just about the schools, it's about our town. And anyone that doesn't have those goals, I've got to understand where your thought processes. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the time. You got me. But I'll tell you what, I still got other questions, though. All right? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Gentlemen, next to you.
Next, of course.
First of all, I want to thank staff for coming here tonight and all the work that you guys have done putting this together. Essentially, I think that it's not about the DPW taking over facilities, really about this marriage and bringing all of these assets, you know, as a previous speaker mentioned. And the perfect example is some of the work we're doing right now across the street from Town Hall, Galvin House. You know, I went over and took a look at some of the demo stuff. You know, we have, they have pipes over there that are supposed to be this big but have about this much room left in them. So while they're doing all this replacement, they realize that there's an issue with the wastewater line outside. So the beauty of it is, especially having someone like Mike at the top, I mean, Mike has an extensive background on the building side and knows all the codes. But the coordination of all of the DPW units together and having all those assets available, which is really something we never really had because there wasn't a combined effort. And it really isn't anybody's fault, it's just the way it is. You know, we had a separate facilities and there's a lot of things that are separate that hopefully over time will be able to do economies of scale and save money and have more efficiency. But I think that, you know, the schools have worked with, you know, what they've had over the years and unfortunately, you know, it's been a difficult task. And I think that this is just a great way to join forces and, you know, our facilities division has had to make its way and kind of mature to this point. And, you know, I just remember when I first took office and I looked at American Legion and we were kind of at a tough point there and I said, well, we'll figure something out. And sure enough, you know, they did it from under this job there. And, you know, Doarty Gym was really amazing transformation because that building is really old. I mean, I went to junior high at Central next door, that was our gym. So I was playing eighth grade basketball there. Not really, I was sitting on the bench, but I'll just say that when I look at the abilities and you look at, you know, more recent information on Quincy Schools, they talk about these old buildings that are great. Well, you know, as we do the assessment, we're going to find out which ones are going to have the ability to continue and which ones we might have to look in another direction. But I just think bringing all of these assets together and complimenting one another is what the goal is. And I've enjoyed working with Mr. Cronin over the years as well and learned a lot. He's a good money guy too, so. He's had a great job. But I just think that this collaboration just brings so many assets to the table. And Mr. Arseneau, I just hope you know that, is he still here?
Yeah.
That water and sewer is going to have to eat a lot of work. But anyways, because we have, I don't know, at least five or six or seven water meters that have to be replaced and there might be some extra work that has to go into that. So those are some of the things that I think that make sense and will help us save money and utilize the assets we have here in town. So I just want to thank you guys for everything and thank our administration here for all the hard work they put into this world.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Cobbleman?
I would like to see Doarty Gym because my son played basketball there and I remember there being a mop and buckets as it was leaking in through the ceiling during the games. So I would love to take a look at Doarty Gym.
Sure.
You won't recognize.
Here's the keys.
No, you won't recognize it.
They lay the dollar short everywhere, everywhere we go.
But you won't recognize it. It's amazing what they did there.
All right, well, let's set up a tour.
Absolutely. And we'll show you Town Hall, we'll show you the other buildings we've worked on. We've converted the Eldridge School, which is the Marge Crispin Center. We did a large conversion over at the 74 Pond Street, which houses some programs, as well as the parks and rec. We also have retirement in there, we have the Dubana Center. So we've done quite a bit of work and we'd be happy to show anybody and take you on a tour and let you see the things that we've done.
Great, thank you.
Happy to do that.
I also wanted to thank you for coming tonight. I thank you for coming for all of the finance and operations meetings. I think there was three that you were in attendance. You know, thank you for responding to our questions. I know you have a vested interest, as you've said previously. You have kids in the school system. Jim Arseneau has kids in the school system. You've shown us examples, as you've just described, of the work that you have done. So I just want to thank you all for making yourselves available, answering all of our questions. We do have a few more questions that I will share with Chief Staff before our next meeting. And so we'll take this up at the second. And again, I just wanted to repeat that finance and operations did move this forward with favorable action. So again, we'll take it up and vote on the 23rd, which is our next meeting. So again, thank you very much for being here and thank you for all your work on this.
We're in the heat in this room.
The next meeting for the.
Meeting, sure. They don't have balancing valves on them.
What you have.
Straight on. Are they open or straight closed?
Our next meeting for the finance and operations meeting is on May 18th, when the school department budget goes before Ways and Means, the town council, Ways and Means, the Town Hall at 6:00 PM. Again, that'll be May 18th, so that's our next meeting. So that is my update on finance and operations. Is there anything anybody else wants to add, finance and operations, from the other committee members? No? Okay. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobbleman and a second one, Mr. Devon. Mr. Devon?
Aye.
Ms. Toffey?
Aye.
Madam Chair. Ms. Cobbleman?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch? And the Chair, both aye.